So we have a form. Everybody. We got anybody besides Sandy?
We have a form.
Yes.
Are you on a phone?
I am on a phone.
Okay, then you, yeah, you probably won't be able to see everybody then. We have, well, we have Sandy and Stephanie. Your sites and you, so that's four.
So sorry, everybody, every other piece of technology I have did not want to work tonight. So I'm really sorry I'm late. Okay, so we're ready to rock and roll. So let's start it off. Let's do the flag salute. So for everybody at home that is watching when I started the meeting of the planning commission for Fortuna for September 14th. Please understand with the COVID thing, we're not disrespecting anybody by not, everybody doing it, not standing up. I'm gonna like myself, but I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Of the minutes from September 14th.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of September 14th as presented.
I second. Katie.
A roll call vote, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sights.
Yes.
All right. So we're gonna move on to public comment. So members of the public can maybe heard on item of interest not on the agenda. Speaker suggesting the commission will be limited to three minutes or whatever. Please be advised that by law, the commission is not able deliberate or take action on any issue that was not on the agenda. It is gonna give you a whole bunch of information right there. If anybody is watching at home wants to talk to us, please call the number. Follow the prompts and we will be glad to listen to you tonight. We really love to hear from people, so please do that. How's everybody been? I got a thumbs up over there. Everybody enjoying the fall weather?
Beautiful and cold.
Yeah, kinda like this time of year.
Why?
It starts feeling good, be honest with you. It's not too hot, not too cold, got that nice that you can cuddle up, I guess, I don't know. Yeah, I look like a big cuddle up kinda guy. Katie, are we hearing anything from anyone?
No calls.
No calls. All right. Looking for a motion to close public comment.
I move that we close public comment.
I'll second it.
Thank you both. Katie, we have to do a whole.
We don't need to do a roll call to close public comment.
All right, well, let's move on to the business set. So we continued, this is also the public. Hearing consider to the city council. I'm ending the Fortuna municipal code deleting chapter seventeen six one one eight. Replacing it with seventeen one zero six point zero zero one point five accessory one. So this is continues from last time and the continues with pretty much. I think in, this is my opinion, but we were all kinda frustrated with the whole issue of being told what we have to do. And the whole thing came about that we need just a little bit more information on it. Did everybody get their pockets and read through what was going on? But did anybody have any more comments or questions about what was happening that didn't get discussed in the last meeting?
We do have a brief presentation to present, you know, the additional information that was provided in the packet, kind of focusing on what you asked for as far as, you know, just identifying the where, where the planning commission had, or where the city has flexibility. So I think that should be pretty quick to walk through that.
Yeah, they're I'm sorry, but we have the same reason, the person that was freezing presentation last night.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, the same person that was doing the presentation last time.
Yes, yes, Rob Holmland from Plan West Partners is here and Vanessa Blodgett from Plan West is also here.
So Rob was here, Rob, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Well, Rob, last time you were here, you were giving us a lot of information and we weren't real perceptive to the fact and I apologize for that. You were kinda the messenger and we were kinda shooting the messenger and I apologize for that. Wasn't very polite to you that being in the friendly city. Don't take it personal.
No apology needed. You're right. We're just the messenger here and, and our message is that there's certain things the state obligates cities to do and then you have some options. And so the, the item on the table is what do you want to do with your options?
Right, and, and we weren't real perceptive, at least I wasn't real perceptive to you and I apologize for for myself. How's that? I'm not gonna apologize for anybody else, but I'll apologize for myself. Looking over what we did last time and what you guys sent this time, I really appreciate all the work you done and try not to do that to you again tonight. So thank you very much for doing what you're doing. Anybody have any questions before we start this day?
I, I have a kind of an introductory question. I've read over the materials and Mike Wells kinda gave me an overview of the last meeting. But I was working the election as a poll worker and so I wasn't there on the 14th, but tell me a little bit, Plan West Partners, are you guys local or are you out of the area?
Yeah, we're local. Well, we're in Arcata and we've been around for 25 years. It's coming next year and doing a lot of local planning. We do a lot of work in Burndale and working with Fortuna and Arcata and McKinleyville and Harbor District. And so we do a lot of planning in the region and are, have updated housing elements, multiple housing elements for different jurisdictions and are now doing ADU ordinances and other zoning related updates for different cities and jurisdictions.
Thanks.
Anybody else have any questions just before we start this? So anything from previous that didn't get answered that you'd like to hear about? Well, hearing, let's move on and start the show. So if you would like to, please do your presentation and of course, we'd be glad to hear from you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just start it off really briefly. And so the packet that you received the attached draft ordinance, there aren't any changes to that, but what the staff report does is identify the code sections where there is some flexibility so that you can kind of focus on those. That flexibility is allowed by state law. Basically, everything else in the code is, you know, just like a reformatting of the state government code. And then, so those, I think there are like six sections that are in the packet and Rob is going to present those briefly and then let you discuss them and make decisions, you know, and you can walk through each one and discuss those. The first part of the staff report, I did give you a history of the state law and just kinda some actions that have been taken in the city, you know, by the city council to get us to where we're at now. And you know, there, the state starting in, I think like 2018, passed a series of legislative acts that created the government code section addressing ADUs. And, you know, basically starting out by requiring that ADUs be allowed as a principally permitted use in all cities and counties in the state. So take, you know, removing any kind of like use permit or special permit or possibly an outright prohibition in some cities. You know, for the interest of creating affordable housing. And those legislative acts did get increasingly more restrictive, resulting in, you know, the one that you're dealing with now. And I think it's frustrating because, you know, of course they removed much of, you know, the jurisdiction's autonomy. And also, in a lot of instances, the standards are more permissive for an ADU than they are for, say, a single family residence being constructed, you know, on that parcel. So like the setbacks can be as low as four feet. And, you know, parking can be eliminated and things like that. So I think that, you know, there is a lot of frustrating components. But that's what we're dealing with. The city council at a at a workshop, planning priorities workshop, I think that was in 2018, did direct staff, did prioritize certain programs out of the housing element. So the housing element was adopted and it does include an ADU policy that, you know, that the city's ordinance gets updated to conform the state law. So the council did make that a priority. And after that, the city did, the council authorized the staff to submit a grant application to HCD for the SB two grant that is funding this ordinance update and some other housing related policies as well. So that's kinda how we got here. You know, and it does kinda create clear direction from the council that this is the path that they, you know, want the staff to take. And so your recommendation is really important in part in that process. Also included in the packet, I did provide HCD's ADU handout, which you know, really kinda describes in there, you know, some more informal language. The state, the state government code requirement. So if you've had a chance to look at that, it kinda provides, you know, a different clarifying language on a lot of these, how these can get implemented. And then you did ask for a comparison or just you know, what other cities are doing. And we did find, Katie found a a website, really, I think it's related to HCD, which lists, provides all of the AD ordinances that have been adopted in this, in the state and a link to each of those ordinances. So if you had a chance to look at that, it's pretty interesting to, you know, do a comparison. The few that I looked on that I saw were cities that just basically followed the state and didn't even, you know, they were, those cities chose to actually facilitate more ADU development as, you know, infill affordable housing. So I didn't come across any that were trying to be more restrictive, but you know, the state does make that pretty hard to be more restrictive, but you know, Plan West did kinda pull out all of the areas where we do have some discretion and that's what is in the packet and which Rob will present. So, you know, as far as the, the process, I think, you know, when I did kinda list the history and the steps we've taken, I think, you know, we, we are in a good position of making good progress on, you know, this ordinance as well as we're concurrently working on the other projects in that SB two grant, which, you know, we can talk about that at another time, but that has been in your monthly report. And I think we've talked about a few things, the design review standards and multifamily standards as well and a few others. So so that's basically how, you know, we're at this point and I'm gonna hand it over to Plan West to just, to describe the standards for you in more detail.
Thanks Liz. And I think I'll get us started and then Rob is gonna chime in and fill in as, as we take you through this. And we don't really have a fancy presentation, but I do have the kind of what your staff report goes through, the kind of options that we're gonna be talking about that I can put up on my screen. It's just the text. So do you think that would be helpful to have up on the screen as we discuss it? I guess it's what's in the packet.
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be good to help them go through each item, you know, item by.
My screen then. And get this up here. We'll see it in a minute. Okay, can you see that now? Yes, okay. So overall, where the city has discretion is how you want to address if there are specific sites or specific projects where applicants want to deviate from the standards and that means, you know, so if they can't meet all the standards that are in there or they want to need to modify them in some way, just to meet site constraints or other concerns, then they can come, go through a process to do that. So, you know, if they want to deviate from objective design standards, they can go through design review. And if they want to deviate from the development standards, then they can come to planning commission for a use permit. So this is how it's written currently and proposed in the regulations. And the other option is to not allow for deviations in the standards, which would limit people, what people could potentially, how they could build an ADU on their on their property. So this is the first kind of section where there are, we want to have a discussion and decide if this is how we want to move forward as proposed, or if we wanna discuss other, the other option.
Well, here's, here's a question to the commission. Did all of you get the updates that we were asking for?
Yes.
Is there anything that difference from the last meeting that we need to go over? I mean, do we really need to go over all the the standards that, that were set? And I said, I know we weren't real perceptive to this last time. I know I wasn't. I'm not a real mandate kinda guy. You tell me you have to do something and said so and I'm not real happy about that, but looking back over it is what we're gonna end up doing. On what I've read and what I'm looking at, where they've made the recommendations, I'm, I'm been pretty good with what the recommendations are. But I want everybody else's feelings, how, do you wanna go through these? You wanna each one or do you want to? What, how you guys wanna proceed, basically?
I'm with you, Chris. I think what's, what's been presented is good.
Yes, I was able to watch the meeting because I was out of town. And so I'm up on what happened and I'm up on the paperwork and I feel it's just a point of streamlining, as Katie said, maybe possibly. I mean, that's how I'm taking it. And it looks good to me.
Does anybody feel like they need to go over more of this or can we move this forward with more discussion? I, it's up to you guys and I don't wanna push them along. I want everybody to have their input, but I know, like you said, last time, I was very unperceptive to the fact and I apologize for that. I really do. Looking at it, I really don't want a somebody else's house or away from mine.
I, I have a question for Vanessa or Rob or both of them. I'm assuming that you guys have worked closely with the city council on this.
We went to the city council in a study session a while ago and provided, you know, some kind of the basic highlights and topics of this. And then we are coming back to you. We worked with a stakeholder group. So this has been out to stakeholders that included, you know, builders, residents, it included kind of a hopefully a diverse mix of people. We tried to get a diverse mix of people on that stakeholder group, which is also working with some of the other SB two projects. So it has been gone through that group and then we are coming back to you to get the recommendations and take it to the city council next.
I can, I get, go ahead, you guys, go ahead.
I was just gonna build on that just a little and say that what we're talking about here is changing the city law when it comes to land use. And so the state requires that any, every city has to have a planning commission. And whenever you change the law about land use in the city, the planning commission has to make a recommendation to city council. So we have met with the city council about this in a general sense. We've met with the stakeholder group and gone over the details. Now in the process, we're looking for your recommendation to council. And then from here, we have to go to city council where they'll actually take the action to change the city law. So to answer your question, yes, but we do have to go back to them for them to adopt this and to for them to deliberate on your recommendation.
Yeah, I, I was aware of that. I was just wondering how much interaction y'all have had with them.
Two meetings several months ago.
Okay.
So one of the questions that I, I know Kevin's not here tonight and I know, and he is, when it comes to insurance and stuff, he's kind of our guru on, on the team. He had brought up the fact that his insurance company, for the most part, would not for the most part, would not be insuring any of these properties or canceling their insurance because of this, if the main structure is not if the secondary structure is bigger than the main structure or becomes vice versa, you know, that the secondary structure is now become the main structure because of proper, the way the property sits. And then again, with the fire the state fire marshal and people like that has all that gone through scrutiny with all this and I'm I talked to Liz a little bit about today, about, we're not gonna be the little engine that could, that this little town is gonna change what's going on, but I'm sure somebody somewhere has thought about that. Has that gone through?
Um, I, I, well, I did talk to the building official and fire department about the, you know, the fire safety standards and they both said that that the regulations, the four foot setback from the property line was what we discussed and that that does meet the fire code. You know, and I I mean, I assume well, the bill, the fire department and the building department, obviously the building department processes are, you know, permits. And if it doesn't meet building code, it's not gonna get approved. And we also refer the permits to the fire department. So anything, you know, if there's any type of you know, design that doesn't meet the code, they are not gonna, it's not gonna go through. So I, you know, overall, the standard does meet the codes. If there are any specific situations where that's in question, it's gonna be scrutinized by both of those.
So it's not whether it meets the new codes. The new codes that we're setting tonight.
Right, no, we're talking about the new codes.
So has anything been talked about through insurance companies and writing policies or anything like that? It'd be really, I'm sure it'd be really upsetting to somebody that they can't ensure a new structure that they just put you know, thousands of dollars in his, that gone through anywhere in the state? I'm only asking, I know Kev is not here and I know that was one of his big deals.
I can say that if it's helpful, I did a little bit of research and looked around the city and this would only apply if someone had a house that was less than 1,200 square feet. And then wanted to build an ADU that was larger than their house. And as I'm looking around the city, I can't find any houses that are less than 1,200 square feet. So this may be just theoretical conversation. But the solution seems pretty easy to me in that when an applicant comes forward to the city, it would be city staff responsibility to say, hey FYI, you've got a very unusual situation here where your house is smaller than 1,200 square feet and you're planning on building larger than 1,200, larger than 1,200 square feet. So therefore I encourage you to check with your insurance provider. But overall, the city doesn't regulate the insurance industry. So at best, the city staff can merely inform property owners when they fall into the either very unusual or what I think is probably not actually going to ever occur in Fortuna type of situation.
Okay.
I think it's a smart question to ask, but in the research I've done, I don't think that situation exists in Fortuna. And if it does, I think, you know, city staff could inform the applicant, you've got a really unusual situation here. I encourage you to talk to your insurance provider.
Okay. Anybody else having questions about this or need to have further discussion? Or do want to hear the whole explanation again? And I'm not trying to push them along. I really, really wanna know where we're at with, with everybody. Has everybody read into this and, and seen it?
Is the question before us whether to, basically are the resolution that staff recommends is to, I mean, summarize it for me?
So what you're looking at on your, on your paperwork is everything that they've highlighted in their, in red is what we're going to adopt. That to have a few restrictions other than what the state standard is, anything that we can instead of 800 square foot, we can go to 1,200 square foot. There's a, there's a few standards that we can change. The standards that they have outlined is where we're at, is what we wanna change. So the last meeting again wasn't very receptive for, at least me and a few other people that we had not like the fact that we are being told what to do again by the state of California. And but it's a mandate, it's something that we're gonna have to do whether we like it or not. And the fact that we can change a few things to make it a little easier for all of us. And a little more difficult for a property owner to say, hey, I wanna put a doghouse in the backyard and that's where we're at. So. But if you want to hear the whole process, I I am totally fine with that. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
What do, uh, you consultants anticipate as the biggest unintended consequences of either just going with the state mandate, as it were, or the new, you know, the new law? Or, you know, adopting our variations that staff recommends? What are the unintended consequences, possible unintended consequences of each?
Well, so, yeah, just to, to be clear, um, you're already implementing the state law and it was effective in twenty sixteen. And so the city's already implemented that. The only thing before you is whether you want to customize what the state has already written. Uh, and so what are the biggest unintended consequences? Um, I would say it's the other way around. Right now, since you're using the state law as written, you have very little flexibility. So the implication of adopting this is you would have more local control over how this is implemented. Um, so the implication of not adopting is that you have less local control. And the implementation of adopting it is that you have more local control. But if I, you know, if you want to go absolute worst case scenario, the ordinance has written does give the planning commission the ability to override some of the, the, um, height restrictions and setback restrictions. So if a quorum of your, well, so if you have an applicant that wants to build an EDU, uh, that is two feet from the property line. And their neighbor doesn't want them to do it. Uh, but this, this ordinance is written such that they could bring it to the planning commission. And the planning commission could evaluate the situation and then decide whether that's a good move or not. I assume that a quorum of the planning commission would not do that, but worst case scenario is that you could have a planning commission that approves an even smaller setback. Is that the question you're asking?
It would look like San Francisco.
If the planning commission elected to go smaller, but the power would be in the planning commission's court to modify those standards on a case by case basis.
So if we don't adopt this resolution tonight, that would be a more pro-growth PACaman policy. But it also would tend toward sloppy development? Am I saying that accurately?
If you don't adopt it, you're going with what you've had on the books since twenty sixteen, which is the state regulations. If you do adopt it, you've got that plus some customization where the planning commission has the authority to override some of those rules uh, in case by case spaces.
But we, but on the, on the case by case basis, we can only do what is recommended in the draft now.
Correct. Yes, we've written it so that the planning commission, the city has the maximum flexibility for customization. We've given you as much local control as we can.
If we don't adopt it, and just want to make sure I'm clear, if I, if we don't adopt it tonight, somebody comes in with the same case scenario and says two feet and we say, no, we want you to go ten feet. We can't do that because it's in the guidelines that you can only go. What is in this recommendation tonight?
Uh, well, so in that case, the state has said that four feet is the furthest that you can require someone to be from the property line. Um, so that's, that example doesn't necessarily work.
In the recommendation tonight.
Say again?
So that is what is with, what is we are recommending tonight.
Um, what you're, well, what's, yes, what you would be recommending tonight is the city to maximize your local control and to have the ability to adjust those things that can be adjusted.
So it's,
We're already required to allow a four foot setback. We've, we've been using the four foot setback since this, the latest update was adopted. So we can't reduce that setback and we can't, we, we could reduce the setback, but we can't make it any greater. We're already, we're already doing four feet. This, this ordinance doesn't change that. It doesn't reduce the setback to four feet. We're already restricted to that.
It doesn't matter whether we do it tonight or we do it the day of that somebody comes to us with this. So if we don't approve it, we're going to say you can only go four feet. That's what I'm getting, so.
No.
I mean, that's just one, that's just one example, what the, what the, um, what the code, the proposed code does is allow an applicant to request a reduction. So, um, you know, it could be like, so really on a case by case basis, so there may be a reason why that could be a good thing. Like if it's a historical house with an existing two foot setback and they don't have any close neighbors and it's single story. And we actually, we already have that in our code and we've, we, you guys have approved those. So like an extension of an existing non-conforming setback. So in that case, it would say, hey, I'd like to have a two foot setback and you can consider it. So it allows, you know, really flexibility on a, on a case by case basis and approval by the planning commission.
Or we can extend it to six feet. We can only extend it to four feet.
Yeah, if they were principally permitted and didn't need a special permit, if they follow the four foot that's in the state code and in this draft code, they, they wouldn't need to come to the planning commission because that's the base standard. So really the flexibility is, um, anything where they want an exception to that code.
But the four feet is what is already in the code that we're.
Yes. Right, right now, it's a five foot setback in the R one six zoning. And so the state has said, you know, we, we don't want to see cities, you know, putting up roadblocks. We want to, um, make the accelerate housing. So we're going to allow a four foot setback. We have no choice on that one. So really, it's the existing standards that we're already implementing. And the exception, the use, the exception is for, um, development standards or design standards that come to the planning commission. To, um, get an exception that goes beyond what the state is already allowing.
Right. So is everybody on board with what's going on or does anybody go through? To the whole, uh, the whole thing. Or have we understood what we're talking about from the last meeting? That's all I'm trying to do tonight is, do you want to go through the whole thing or are you good with it?
I'm good with it.
I'm good, I'm good with it too, Steph.
Mark?
I'm not as familiar with it due to, uh, working the election on the last meeting.
So would you like to hear what they have to say? Or, okay. So. Let's go through the, um, go through it and, uh, give the presentation of what you're going to do tonight. You there?
Yep. And so I think, um, you know, we don't have a repeat of the presentation that we did last time. We weren't planning on doing that. We're just going through what is in your staff report, but if you have specific questions, we're happy to try to answer on any part of the order, of the regulations that were in there. The one thing that I did want to also mention is in the objective design standards, which is part H. That is where, you know, the city is really saying like, this is where you can address some of the privacy impacts and some of the other, you know, potential impacts that these can have to neighbors. So this is a section that is optional, that the city has, you know, some discretion over right now and moving forward. And, um, so I just wanted to kind of highlight that. And those are, are to address some of the neighborhood impacts.
Thanks, Vanessa. So Mark going through, um, bucket, have you seen anything that you have specific questions on?
No.
Okay. All right, I'm going to open this up to public comment. If anybody has any objections, uh, please let me know. Katie, do we have anybody out there, um, that, right now, that is, uh, I'm going to talk to us. This is kind of a big deal for the city and I'm kind of shocked that nobody's out there talking about it.
I have not, we have not had anybody jump in.
Okay, so let's give it a few minutes. I would tell everybody that's, all the commissioners, take a look at what, um, was highlighted from the last meeting. If there's anything that jumps out at you, please bring it up. Again, I'm, I'm not a big.
I, I have a question. Uh, being that cannabis cultivation and processing are a big part of the culture and economy here in Humboldt County, um, is there any way that that culture and economy could impact our residential neighborhoods with these changes in a way that we really should be thinking about ahead of time? Where we, you know, this decision tonight could, um, you know, there's something on the radar that, you know, we should be thinking about connection with that, possibly. Good or bad?
I can give you bad, but I'll, I'll, I'll talk to, let them talk first.
I don't know, Liz, you want to try to answer that? I can't think of any connection whatsoever between these two things. So this is about people, um, building a second unit in their backyard or attached to their house. Maybe I'm not following your, uh, your question. What, what is the question again?
Yeah, maybe Chris could, uh, maybe Chris could go for it. Thanks.
I'll give you, I'll give you, because I got to deal with it all the time where, where, where I work. So having a secondary unit means people can grow indoors more. Um, and having rental properties and people that have rental properties have this problem a whole lot is that um, they rent a property out and people do indoor grows. They literally rip the floors out and, and blow that, what they call blow the house up. Um, so I might, in my house, I might be renting and not be, and not doing that. But with, um, them wanting to create another rental property in my backyard, they may be, and that would be the, the issue. I think that's where it's going with. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's kind of sounds like where he's going with it.
I see. Okay. Um, yeah, go ahead.
Well, the state law already allows these dwellings.
Right. And that's where we're going with it is, again, um, if you, my problem with the whole issue, and this is what I tried to express last time. If I take forced, less than four steps out my back door, with one foot in front of the other out my back door, thinking there'd be another house there. My whole backyard's gone. Somebody can come through the, the side of my, the side house, be parking on the street, come in and be, be, have a dwelling right there. The, I have neighbors really four feet away. And if they're going to be, again, like Mark said, with the cannabis thing, they're going to be blowing the house up and doing that. Or you might as well be living in an apartment complex and that's not where we're at. We're trying to live in a nice neighborhood where now we're in apartment complex. And it just seems to me the states is super overreaching and that's where I'm at on the whole thing. It's something we have, not something we want to do, but at the end of the day, we're already doing it. And we need to kind of move on with it and get it over with. And.
This is the homeowner's choice to be, to, to do this or not do it.
Right, it is. And if the home, the person who's the house that I'm living in wants to do it, I got nothing to say about it. So move out.
Well, and adopting this allows us to have some say in the matter other than the state law.
Right. And that's where we're at.
And that's where the most people are getting this, know that you have a little bit of say in truth. And you want to be able to have some say in it.
So, yeah, so that makes me much more comfortable knowing that we will have a say in it rather than just following the state law, which is a huge state. So at least our community as a planning commission, we have a say in some of the issues, which makes me comfortable.
Right. And, you know, I think it's worth pointing out, this ordinance does include some design standards. So while you can't change that four foot setback, you can say that the house has to have certain design standards. Uh, and, you know, you're limiting it to sixteen feet. Also worth noting that your neighbor could currently, you know, prior to all of this, per city law, your neighbor could build five feet from the property line for their house. So if they wanted to do an addition onto their house, they could have come within five feet. This is one foot closer. To answer the cannabis question, uh, if it's the property owner that's wanting to build a grow house in their backyard, I don't think they would go through the trouble of building something that's going to be permitted as a residence with a bathroom and a kitchen in it. They could just build a garage and do that. If it's a renter, uh, Liz would have to answer this, but the city, the, the state required cities to either allow people to grow four plants in their home or to prohibit it. And that was twenty seventeen or so. So, um, does the city allow, uh, personal use cultivation currently?
Yeah, that's the state, state allowance. And I, it's six plants. It might be six.
Four, six, something like that.
Yeah, so. Um, Fortuna doesn't have the ability, the authority to prohibit that. But Fortuna did adopt, um, an ordinance with standards. The state allows standards. And one of those standards in Fortuna is that, um, those four or six plants are within a, a detached, like within a, um, you know, a structure, either the house, a portion of the house or a shed or a garage. So that's allowed now for personal cultivation. They are required to get a permit from the city to do that. We haven't had a lot of permit requests, I think, one the last couple of years. Um, the city did just, um, the police department has a, um, they're, they're enforcing it with, um, what is that Katie? Katie has the, the tickets. Katie receives the tickets.
Their administrative citations. So because, um, we do have an ordinance that prohibits commercial growing and residential growing, you know, over a certain number of plants and that doesn't meet certain parameters. There really wasn't any teeth in the ordinance. Now, um, we do have the administrative citations that the PD can issue for cultivation that are a thousand dollars a day until the grow is eradicated. And then also in our city ordinance, um, if plants are grown in a residence, it still needs to be able to be operated as a residence. So it can't be over a certain percentage of the square footage of the home. There still needs to be bedrooms, bathrooms, kitchens that are accessible. So, um, if somebody were to violate that, now that we have these administrative citations, they could get a ticket and be charged a thousand dollars a day.
Yeah. It's. Eureka did the same thing and to great effect. So I can tell you that, um, there, there's practically no, uh, illegal indoor cultivation in Eureka anymore because of the fines are so steep, the circumstances are so great, uh, that, that, uh, you know, it's been nearly eliminated in Eureka. So, uh, is that really happening? Is there indoor cultivation happening throughout Fortuna currently?
Is anybody out there that's watching can call in and now let them know, let people know what's really going on because it's really going on. There's, I, I'm not kidding, so where I work, we. There's, I, I'm not kidding, so where I work, we have, um, people that own houses that have continually come in and have their houses completely tore apart, the floors and because of illegal growth.
Re- I understand, I understand this is, the, the marijuana cultivation is an important issue. But I'm not exactly how sure how it's tied into what we're talking about tonight.
I, I feel, I feel the same way.
It's, it, it, we're, it seems like we're, we're following a rabbit trail.
We're, we're killing, we're beating a dead horse on that subject right now.
Okay, so let's go back to public comment then. Um, Kate, we're not hearing nothing?
We've had no calls.
Okay, looking for a motion to close public comment.
Motion to close to public comment.
I second.
Thank you. Okay, so back to you folks. Is there anything that we need to discuss or questions we need to ask other than making a motion to get this through tonight?
Thanks for, uh, answering my question about cannabis cultivation and processing.
Okay. So hearing nothing, I'm looking for a motion then for tonight, unless somebody else has anything they'd like to, uh, talk about.
Will we make a motion or a recommendation?
It's a, uh, yeah, it's a motion that makes the recommendation. So it's a motion.
I'll make the motion, a recommendation that the Fortuna City Council amend the, the Fortuna Municipal Code by deleting chapter seventeen point zero six point one eight three, second residential dwellings and replace it with seventeen point zero six point zero zero one point five accessory dwelling units.
I'll second that. Roll call vote. Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
Chairman Mobley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Sights?
Yes.
All right, well, thanks for guys for getting this done. I know it's been a problem. And again, um, uh, sorry for all the issues and, and problems. We're kind of, um, we seem like we're shooting a messenger and don't please.
Yes. Land West Partners, we do appreciate all your work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, it's been fun.
Thanks guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's go back to Liz, is there anything going on?
Yeah, yes, um, just really briefly. Um, and this is a really fun thing to share and I'm going to put it on the screen and right now the city parks department is holding, they held one yesterday and tomorrow is another, um, workshop where it's a, um, let's see. Public comment, um, they're taking public comments, um, for a grant application. It's a requirement of the grant application asking for the public's input on what they would like to see done with this potential city park. So city's in the process of purchasing this parcel and, um, applying for a grant to develop it as a park. And they're asking for ideas on what the public wants to see on this site. So this is a really fun thing to present. Um, we're all really excited about it because it just keeps getting closer and closer. The city's been working on this for quite a few year, few years and really the city manager Merrick Perry, um, has been driving it. And we're really grateful for that because, um, you know, he's, he's dialed, dialed in with grants to get, um, you know, get city parcels developed with public infrastructure or whatever perks, um, you know, uh, public works infrastructure, storm grain roads, things like that. So this as you can see is this seven acre parcel adjacent to the Ill River. It's on the east side of the Ill River next to the River Lodge. And it's right at the point there, that's the, um, the little parking area and you know, the Ill River overlook parking area with the table and the fish overhanging it and it's so it extends out, it's a seven acre parcel or a portion of this larger parcel and that's what the dash line is, the property boundary. And then on the overhead, you can see, so this is the overall parcel. Um, the city is also, um, would purchase the whole thing to, um, and they have plans to extend, um, so, to extend the, um, city wastewater treatment plant. So it would underground, um, directional bore under the river and then have a, um, dispersment, um, pipes on the far side of the river. And then fish and wildlife is also interested in, in enhancing the cottonwood, the riparian, um, willow cottonwood forest here as, um, wildlife habitat. So it would really be, you know, accomplishing three things. Um, but the grant is, uh, for development of the park here on the east side. And so, um, you know, we're just taking all, any, anybody's, um, you know, all kinds of ideas. What we have in mind, you know, there could be walking trails and a picnic area similar to what you see here, just for, you know, a typical park for public to access and enjoy adjacent to the river. Um, a natural resource and cultural interpretation area with signs and, you know, trails and things that relate to the natural environment and uh, you know, the Weought Ancestral Territorial Boundaries. Um, Sunday was, um, native, indigenous, um, um, a holiday. And I noticed that they did have a, a public, um, walk along the Ill, Ill River there. Um, right at Strong's Creek is where, um, there was a, you know, an ancestral village, um, for you know, fishing and collecting food and things like that. So that's really important to them. Um, it's, uh, ideas are for, uh, food truck court. Um, having any, you know, entertainment there do, um, for people to gather and possibly have, you know, outdoor festivals and things like that. Um, the city's ideas to, it's, it's someday in the future have a seasonal dock so that people can actually launch little boats and things and, you know, stand up paddle boars, kayaks, canoes, swimming. Uh, dog park, just or viewpoints to just enjoy the river. You know, obviously people enjoy it now and this would just be an additional attractant for visitors and residents, um, yeah, trail component, fish viewing. So yeah, the city is taking public comment now. You can go online and on the city website, there's a link to fill out a survey or you, and or you can go to the River Lodge. The next meeting is, um, that, oh, it's, so the next meeting is the twentieth at the River Lodge. And the grant supplemental is, um, November fifth. So the grant is a proposition, uh, sixty eight rural recreation and tourism program. They've got twenty-three million total available and the individual awards would be in the two hundred to three million dollar range. I'm not sure what the city is proposing. So yeah, so if you want more information, go online and or go to the, the meeting and, um, or call the project manager, the staff manager right now is Cameron, um, the Parks and Recreation, um, director. So that's a really fun thing that the city's working on. So any questions on that?
Looks like fun.
It looks gorgeous.
Yes, we're really excited. We're just really excited to be able to preserve, you know, some riverfront property for the public to use.
Thanks for that.
That is a great idea. I love.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have something down in, in that area where, uh, around the hotels that, uh, people can go.
Yes, the River Lodge guests can, can enjoy it, the hotels, you know, restaurant people, just visitors, um, driving through, stopping at the gas station, taking, you know, eating their lunch there, just take, getting a little exercise and just being able to just view the river and really enhance that experience.
Liz, I got a question. Are they planning one way or the other, no matter what they do to have more parking there off Riverwalk Drive one way or the other, to have more cars be able to pull off Riverwalk some, somewhere and park there no matter what they do?
Um, I haven't heard that as part of a plan. Normally individual projects, like commercial developments obviously have to provide onsite parking.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. Any vacant parcels that aren't developed now would, um, have a parking lot, just like tractor supply and.
Yeah, but it is a given in that if you have a, any one of those particular things, you're going to want a spot for people to park, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I imagine there probably would be some parking for the park development. Some type of parking.
Be, be kind of dumb not to.
Yeah.
We went to a, uh, I went to a place down in Sebastopol. And it was, it was kind of nice. It was a park area. Um, they had a whole bunch of little small storefronts that were open air storefronts. So the whole front end of the store literally opened up. Um, like little ice cream shops and little, you know, knickknack shops and whatever shopping things going on. And I thought it was kind of cool the way they had it all set up and on, depending on which weekend you showed up, they had, like I said, the food trucks there, they had um, different, uh, like like concert type things where different bands would play out in the middle of the square and, and that kind of it was set up really sweet. It was really cool for that would get really good spot right there for. Anyway, so back to you guys, anything, anybody got any questions for anybody? Or nothing. So thank you, everybody for your participation tonight. I know it was a little weird tonight and sorry for being late again. Hope everybody has a good weekend. I'm looking for a motion to close.
I'll make that motion. Go ahead, Stephanie.
I'll make a motion to close.
I'll second.
Katie?
Roll call vote, Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
Chairman Mobley? And Commissioner Sights?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
See you, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.